Council President Santos.
Present.
Councilman Anthony.
Present.
Councilman Castillo. Is absent. Councilman Correa.
Present.
Councilman Harris.
Present.
Councilman Higley Ozzy.
Present.
Councilwoman Curly. Is absent. Councilman Fortune.
Present.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Nerdy T.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Salazar. Absent. Councilman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Urli. You have eleven present, three absent, and you have four.
Thank you. The vocation is going to be given by Councilman, um, the majority of the American.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Tonight I'd like to pray. And I'd like to pray for the people of California. That have lost their lives from wildfires, lost their homes. To our heroes, firefighters, and all the first responders. That have tried to save and help the people of California. And also, to the family of Sergeant Ed Malloy. And Ronald Valero. Thank you.
The vocation of each one is going to be led by Councilwoman, um, the majority of the American.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. And to the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the republic of America. And to the Constitution of the republic of the United States.
Mr. President. I would like to welcome Senator Ana Pissara, Madam President. Thank you for being here, Senator Pissara. And I would like also to welcome. Um, Councilman Mellet. Uh, for the Porte de Los Estinos. Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Council President. I'd also like to welcome this, um, special person to make next eighteen of a class of twenty-two, Province President, leadership cabinet member, tourney, five-week, uh, leadership development cabinet. Do you want to stand up, please? Uh, this is a program that was brought to us by, uh, one neighbor of Miller's and Council President Santos. And I have to put them before and I got to read them last weekend and talk a little bit more about the government. So I just wanted to welcome them today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you, there we are, for bringing them to City Hall. Mr. President.
Appointment by Senator Mayor. I had to hurry. Communication from Senator Mayor dated October eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Leader Ryan.
Madam President, motion to await the reading of items three and four and receive.
Second. The motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item number three and four and the items that have been received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Presentation of ordinances, item five, Council President Santos, Councilman Correa. An ordinance and amendment of chapter twenty-one, Revenue and Finance, Article Three, entitled Funds, Division One. In general, I'll decode the ordinances of the city of Providence by adding section twenty-one dash seventy-six, Use Sports Fund and Grant Perpetual.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to refer item five to committee on finance.
Second. Motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item number five on finance. Anybody in favor?
Aye.
May I have it?
Item six, an ordinance and amendment of chapter twenty-one.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of items six and seven and refer to committee on ordinances.
Second motion. Motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item six and seven and these items are going to be referred to the committee on finances. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Council President Santos and Councilman Correa, item eight, an ordinance commending chapter twenty-one, Revenue and Finance, Article sixteen, sections twenty-one dash two-six-one, two-six-two, two-six-six, and two-six-seven.
Refer to the committee on finance.
Item nine, Councilwoman Miller, campaigning for election, Councilman Salazar and Taylor, An ordinance and amendment of Article twenty-two of chapter two of the total ordinances of the city of Providence, entitled Administration, amending section.
Madam President. Uh, we need to refer item nine to committee on.
Second. Motion has been made on second to wait the reading of item number nine to committee on ordinances. Uh, Councilwoman Miller.
Uh, yes, thank you, President. I just wanted to say and recommend that this ordinance in particular has been a product of Sepharda Napa, the archer of the courtroom, who recognized this problem of, like, so many cities in the region. We have monuments that just have some problems organically throughout the city. And they're now, uh, they're really in the right cultural context and not related in historical context. So what it sort of does is just creates an advisory committee. Um, sorry, if any local residents are clearly thoughtful and just want to take the process.
Thank you. Uh, instead of her first, be my first to committee on finance. Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Mr. President.
Presentation of resolutions, item ten, Council President.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of items ten and eleven and refer to committee on finance.
Second. Motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item number ten and eleven. And these items are going to be passed to the committee on finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Council President Santos, Councilman Correa.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of items twelve through fourteen and pass on a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item number twelve through fourteen. And these items are going to be passed on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Item fifteen, resolution requesting the town council to move across the installation of a four-way stop sign at the intersection.
Leader Ryan.
Madam President, motion to wait the reading of items fifteen through sixteen and refer to committee on public work.
Second. The motion has been made on second to wait the readings of item number fifteen and sixteen. And both items are going to be referred to the committee on public work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Item seventeen, Councilman Higley Ozzy and Taylor, resolution in support of the pro-democratic Hong Kong people. Madam President.
Chairman Higley Ozzy.
I'd like the, uh, resolution to be met as the record.
Motion, um, ready with the motion first?
Uh, um, yes, motion.
Motion to pass on a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made on second to pass, um, item number seventeen on a voice vote. Uh, and Mr. President, please, may I have it?
Whereas in March of twenty nineteen, demonstrations condemned the anti-ELA movement began in earnest against the anti-extradition law amendment bill. And whereas the anti-ELA would allow local authorities to detain and extradite criminal fugitives who are bonded in territories with which Hong Kong is not having extradition agreements, including Taiwan and mainland China. And whereas people were concerned that the bill would subject Hong Kong residents and visitors to mainland Chinese jurisdiction, undermining the autonomy of the region and its civil liberties, civil liberties. And whereas the protesters laid out five key demands, which included investigation into the alleged police misconduct and presumption of democratic reforms, which are promised with the basic law that has stagnated since the twenty-fourteen guerrilla revolution. And whereas on June ninth, twenty nineteen, more than five hundred thousand protested that the anti-ELA, one of the largest mass protests in the history of Hong Kong. And whereas on June twelfth, twenty nineteen, the ELA decision was scheduled for a second reading in the legislative council. The protest showed a sharp association in violence. And whereas on July first, twenty nineteen, protesters stormed the legislative council complex in opposition of the legislation. And whereas on July twenty-first, twenty nineteen, the UN long attack where triads assaulted protesters and bystanders all on Hong Kong, while police were accused of bludgeoning by their intentional slow, slow action. And whereas on August eighteen, twenty nineteen, more than one point seven million people attended a rally condemning police brutality, inspired by the politic way, a human chain at fifty kilometers long period of the Hong Kong way. And whereas on February first, twenty nineteen, a large-scale demonstration occurred on the seventh anniversary of the People's Republic of China, which resulted in the death of an eighteen-year-old student protester. And whereas protests continue today. And on Sunday, the number third, a man slash several people who were part of the year, a pro-democratic politician, and tried to please storm several shopping malls to thwart protesters demanding government reforms. And whereas these protests have been ongoing for nearly five months because of the distrust of the mainland Chinese government by the residents of Hong Kong. And their belief that the counterattacks against protesters were orchestrated by the mainland Chinese government. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Providence stands with the residents of Hong Kong who are resolute in their desire for a pro-democratic government. And be it further resolved that upon passage of the city of Providence will not buy Chinese-made products when possible.
Chairman Higley Ozzy.
Madam President. I was before, my younger classmates here. I was talking to these young students. They're actually college students. I asked them, I said, "Mr. President," they said, "Is, um, can you talk about who is America's allies?" And I said, "Ask them, is Russia America's ally?" And they all said, "No." "Russia is evil. Russia is horrible. Russia does horrific things." "It's not good." I said, "Is England our ally?" And they said, "Yes, England's our ally." "England's our brothers and sisters and, and, yeah, philosophers of democracy and freedom." And I asked them, I said, "Is China our ally?" And they said, "Yes, China's our ally. China's our brothers and sisters." And I'm like, "China's our ally?" I said, "China, a capitalist country that represses people's civil liberties and freedoms and rights, is our ally?" And this college class thought that China was an ally of America. They thought China was an ally of everything that America stands for. Freedom, democracy, civil liberties. They thought they stood with us. Folks, they don't. Because what's happening is, we're mixing in magic, the economic power of China. They're thinking it's pro-democracy, pro-freedom. It's not. Hong Kong is a perfect example. You know, when our forefathers decided to create this country way back when and create this grand experiment, they went pro-. This idea of this kind of democracy thing. This idea that people vote there. The idea that a monarchy will not rule over the people, that they would rule a republic. People across the world thought those folks in Philadelphia were terrorists, were radical, were crazy, and horrific individuals. But thank God those folks began that process. Because today, uh, as well as this very diverse, diverse body of city council has the very right to stand there tonight to defend freedom, liberty, and justice. The fact that our young people think that China, in their repressive ways, is our ally, we must take a stand today and say, "No, they are not. We must defend democracy so we can protect not just your own freedoms, but the freedoms of your brothers and sisters in this audience, in our neighborhood, in our city, and our country." So everybody comes from colleges. I understand, unfortunately, products are, things are products being made in China. But sometimes, an idea starts, starts with a good spark. And I ask all of you to think about this, join today to support pro-democracy in this country, to defend democracy in this country, and to say no to China and to oppressive capitalism. One piece of article that they don't buy from China doesn't support an oppressive government. We need to change it. We need to make it democratic. We need to make it fair, we need equal to the people who live in China as we do here in America. I urge all my colleagues to support this. It's important. Thank you.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
There's no objection to the sponsor, so I would like to be listed as a sponsor on the side of it. Leader Ryan, is the agent there as a sponsor?
Motion has been made on second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. May I have it?
Item eighteen, Councilman Harvick, resolution requesting.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to pass item eighteen on a voice vote.
Second. The motion has been made to wait the readings of item number eighteen and passing on a voice vote. Uh, senior mayor, do you have your intention?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to take a seat and go and talk to my fellow. And I know I'm going back to this day in my country ahead of time, Representative Chris Palazzoni.
Mr. President.
Right. But it's caught up in signing this particular bill. Back during the election, we got Chad Brown, old lady. And we heard from him about this situation. That is raising three kids on the road that does not have the opportunity to take their kids to work with them. Using daycare at a hundred and thirty-five dollars a week. Making a paycheck of two hundred and seventy dollars a week. More than half per day a week goes on child daycare. I, I, I don't want to say the chain, but the chain is particular woman Angela Westfall. She signed a non-compete agreement with her application stating that she would not go to any of their competitors for any particular job, which means that if she tried to better herself by going from one to the other, legally she could not do that. They even told her, "Not only can't you take the job you put in for, but you will, you will be here as long as you want to be here, or you will not receive the raise from this point forward." So I just, I, I just found very upsetting, uh, again, I stand here, I, in support of the legis, legislation that was recently signed into law by Robert Gino Loano. The non-compete agreements in the West Force is unfair. It can harm the protection for an individual likely to reach the ranks of their children's fields. Legislation passed by the General Assembly is to protect our workforce. As the working class said, "We need to support our workers and our workforce at all costs. The non-compete agreements create fear and put limitations on upward mobility of our people." And I was proud to stand with the governor, the senator, and the rep at the signing of this bill moving forward to make it illegal for this kind of, uh, thing to happen moving forward. So now Angela wants to leave moving forward, or anybody that would be in those kind of positions anymore. No one, nobody, I'm surprised it took this long to clear it. Nobody should have to stay with the job and not be able to benefit themselves or their family when they have an opportunity to do so. And again, especially our families that dare to get in line, that are paying more in child daycare, paying more in medical bills than most of our people, than other people are doing, that have the right to go and make more money for themselves and then themselves. So again, I really want to thank the governor, the rep, and the senators. And also the senator, who, 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 she, uh, from the baby election state, I talked to this woman Angela. The woman Angela, could be said, and how true sometimes. I know it's election day, I know I'm having this conversation, but I hope this isn't the last part of this conversation that's going to be through. And I'll never forget, Senator Gordon turned around and said to her, "I'm listening to your conversation. This will not be the last time you hear about this conversation." Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the motion has been made on second, all those in favor? Aye. Post. May I have it?
Item eighteen, Councilman Taylor, resolution requesting the city council.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of item nineteen and refer the committee on city property.
Second. The motion has been made on second to refer, um, to wait the readings of item nineteen and is going to be referred to the committee on city property. Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel like I'm going to have to make a new, like, history block two data following Councilman Higley Ozzy's, uh, testimony. But I'm here today to stand up and, uh, as the council people board meeting. And, uh, I'm here to say that the statue should stay where it is. A little history, you know, and that Kailor Morton and his team from the, uh, Arconis Department, who, uh, really, uh, helped me out with this, to find out a lot of information. As you may or may not know, uh, the Columbus statue was created by Frederick August Bartolome, a sculptor who designed the statue literally, and it was made specifically for the Gorham manufacturing. It was originally cast in silver as a way to highlight the company's expertise and was presented for display at the eighteen ninety-two Colombian exhibition in Chicago. The bronze cast replica was created in nineteen, eighteen ninety-three and dedicated a hundred and twenty-six years ago by the Crusaders tomorrow, November eighth, eighteen ninety-three. On November eighth, eighteen ninety-three, a procession was formed in the Elmond clubhouse, located at the corner of Burnett Street and Elmond Avenue. Under the escort of the Reeves American Band and three hundred children, Mayor Bar, Professor Alonso Williams, and public spirit citizens marched to the Colombian spot at the junction of Reservoir Avenue and Elmond Avenue. There, the children sang Columbus, composed by Anna Shaw, Baloo, and America, composed by the Reeves American Band. It was the gift, it was a gift of the city of Providence from the Elmond Association, a civic group comprised of residents of the neighborhoods near the Gorham Manufacturing Plant. The statue is located in Columbus Square, which is located in the heart of the building, as a steadfast reminder of Elmond's past and prosperity. In two thousand and one, Columbus Square was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Many of the two thousand workers that Gorham Manufacturing employed lived in Reston Triangle, Elmond, South Elmond, Washington Park, which are located towards eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Some streets, such as Melrose, Ano La, Lennox, Clement, and Period Street, were named after Gorham Silver Flatware, examples of Gorham's manufacturing sold of Lennox Silver Flatware set. As we all know, Christopher Columbus was not discovered in America, but actually landed on an island on what is known now as the Dominican Republic. Which, by the way, is the origin of the majority of residents towards eight, nine, ten, and eleven today. For the past three years, the Dominican Parade and Festival has also been held with Roger Williams Temple of Music located in the Elmond section in Columbus. So not only a hundred and twenty-six years ago was it tied into the Gorham Manufacturing. Today, as I stand, it can be tied into the Dominican Republic, which there actually is a historic Columbus museum. Ultimately, this statue embodies the positive impact Gorham Manufacturing had on the neighborhood and also showcases the Dominican heritage seen today throughout the eight, nine, ten, and eleven. I stand here today in full support of the statue staying where it is currently. With that being said, this year, uh, last, actually, when I campaigned, a lot of people from, uh, Six Seventy-Five come to the, uh, Elmo League Complex, wanting to have this apart so they could walk to, um, have benches, have sandwiches, to get off the bus, they could stay there. This year, I am putting my neighborhood infrastructure running into lighting, uh, park benches, picnic benches, societies, and et cetera. And next month, I plan to have a Christmas tree lighted in Columbus Square. The future of this statue should be decided by this community. After all, it was the Elmo Association gifted this statue to the city a hundred and twenty-six years ago. And I'd also like to thank Senator Zodder's constituents from Ward, Eight, Nine, Ten, Elmo, that have showed up to, uh, for their support. Thank you.
Madam President.
I'll defer.
Councilman Anthony.
If I may, I think, uh, that my main concern is the vandalism of the statue. My main concern is that everybody understands that vandalism is illegal and should not be done. I would like, for the last three years, uh, the statue has been vandalized. It's been done under the need of Columbus. What I ask through Council Taylor is one thing I would like to see is that the statue be secured, have security carries or something kind of to where the vandalism does not happen anymore. Because, uh, again, you can control, everybody has their beliefs or disbeliefs, whatever that may be. But to vandalize everything, and shame on us for knowing that the last three years have been vandalized and evolved, and yet we're able to do it again this year. So that's, that's what I ask, as somebody that knows the history, somebody that respects the history of Christopher Columbus. And I think whoever, I'm listening. I, I think more people should really understand the history of Christopher Columbus. Christopher Columbus was ninety, was leaving as a lot of the attacks on Indians took place. So people instead just want to erase history because that's what, that's what got me upset with the whole situation. We cannot help but erase history. We are all here, we all have our roots because of history. And you know what? I said before about me, and I'll say it again, everybody wants to change history. Not everyone's, people want to change history. No, we welcome new history. My granddaughter is four years old. She's going to be born up on the history from our, 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 our people. And it always baffled me because I had this argument a while back. When the president of Brown University said there will be no more Columbus there because of what Columbus did, they're going to call it a fall down. Well, then you know what? Change the name of Brown University. The biggest slave trade is in the, in the Northeast. It's the Brown University. That's what upsets me so much. If, if, if you're interested in changing history, and looks like just, you know, you got this and you got that. Let's all rock. Let's all rock. Thank you.
Chairman Higley Ozzy.
Thank you, Madam President. Somebody I know that actually, um, I have a great, great ancestor who served on one of the ships and sailed with Christopher Columbus. And this individual wasn't educated, couldn't read or write English. This was, I think, Spanish or Italian. Would listen to Christopher Columbus on the deck during the voyage and speak in his foreign tongue. At that time it was called Latin. Read from a thing he thought was a book, was the Bible. It was a hard situation. Most people who decided to go on this voyage weren't necessarily willing participants. Most of them thought, "I'm not going because I think it's the end of the world, it's flat." But you know, Quin Isabella decided, "You know what? I need to further explore and expand my empire." So she contacted, then a guy showed up, a guy named Christopher Columbus. He said, "I have, can you help me, Quin Isabella? Can you help me fulfill your dream of creating a train route to China? To have a side with anything that was on it? To fill your dream with increased commerce and growth and prosperity? At least in her mind, for her people and her country." This guy, Christopher, said, "Yes, I will take that. I will have three ships." The folks on the ship, by the way, just to get a sense. I know when we talk about education, as you know, the city of Providence has the worst education, worst school system in the nation right now. But back then, it was the worst. They couldn't read or write. There was no GPS. There was no cell phones. There was no coast guard. There was nothing. So some of those folks on that ship, some were willing and some were unwilling. And they weren't. And they were, let's just say, the strongest of characters, but they were on a mission for Queen Isabella. Now, just so you understand, my great, 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 great ancestor wasn't perfect, I recognize that. And in fact, I realize, most likely when my cousin died on the shores of Normandy, he wasn't perfect died, but he died for a purpose. When my cousin served in Vietnam as a guerrilla sergeant, he wasn't perfect. My brother-in-law was passed away to serve in Vietnam, he wasn't perfect. When my father, who served in the Korean War, he wasn't perfect. But they decided at that moment in time that there was a mission stated, that there was a purpose that was willing to put your life on the line for, willing to explore for, or to employ your idea. So Christopher Columbus sailed the blue, we heard it all. But this idea that this one individual on three ships that went that big, probably as big as this world here, all of a sudden created like this unbelievable horrific event. This I can say is pretty naive. Now folks, we want to know horrific event, it's called a Holocaust. An organized, regulated event to kill people that happened not long ago, fifty, sixty years ago. That was an organization. Christopher Columbus is charged to find another train route, his job was to find another passage for exploration. I celebrate Christopher Columbus' feminism. One of those because of my own Italian heritage, as well as by the way, my German heritage. My grandmother came from Germany at the time, which wasn't a very pleasant place because she had to leave. So I celebrate the spirit of exploration, the spirit of willing to take a chance, the willingness to make a better life. Now, to put the blame on this individual, it seems to be extremely unimportant, obtuse. It's a way to make a political point or a political statement about someone that, something that happened in fourteen ninety-two in the old world. That's pretty, that's pretty silly. What we should be thinking about is that in some parts, in some ways, as Councilman Taylor just mentioned about the Dominican Republic, he's absolutely right, you know, we celebrate, we celebrate the exploration, the identification, and the problem. And I know there's a strong connection between the time and the Dominican, and make a poet because of that. And by the way, I'm proud of that. And I know they weren't perfect people, but I'm sure proud of the fact that at least today I can say I have brothers and sisters on an island in the Dominican Republic, brothers and sisters across the world. It's not perfect, but I think we need to celebrate the spirit of exploration, spirit of willingness to take a chance and to make a better life. If it's as simple as this devaluing of everybody's effort, because it was a monstrous effort, it's kind of, I don't know, very, very basic application of just trying to promote a political agenda in order to devalue the spirit of exploration and devalue the, the, the positive aspect of it. So I don't endorse any negative events because some of those folks on that ship, they weren't perfect. Some of those folks on the island were that perfect, that were, by the way. Last time I checked, and last time I checked, I'm not perfect. So I want to thank Christopher Columbus, I want to thank the Dominican Republic, I want to thank my country. Second, we should celebrate this, just like we celebrate other, by the way, individuals in American, in European, in world history that weren't perfect, or at least acknowledge the positive aspects of them. And something, I think that's part of what we should do, you know what I was just saying? Forgiveness, a sense of, a sense of mercy, a sense of willingness to see the better, the better half, the better aspects of people. The glass is half full and a half empty. So I recognize and I acknowledge Councilman Taylor's statement because he's not talking about another piece, not just the history of Christopher Columbus, but the history of this neighborhood. It's rich, it's loving, it's not perfect, folks, but you know what? It's something that he's proud of and the people that there are. So I think we should use some deference to folks that are willing to take a stand on those good aspects.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I want to thank Councilman Taylor for what is especially thoughtful of the resolution that was made that said that nothing should happen without a thorough conversation with the residents of the neighborhood, and so I want to thank you for that because I think that speaks to, you know, another bump to the record, because I was introduced earlier tonight, right? So one, like the way we tell our history and our origin story has incredible power, like it has incredible power about colonialism and U.S., right? And so for many, many years, we told a particular origin story about Christopher Columbus. We now know a lot more because we have, over the last say fifty years, made some small steps towards including many more voices in who is telling the story, who is doing the research, who is actually standing up and saying like what our community is and what our culture is. And so, you know, for me, when we're talking about a monument that, as we said, like in the neighborhood, has something to do with the history of the neighborhood, what is also so important is this opportunity to recognize that, you know, and I respect that idea of the spirit of exploration, but we're talking about manufacturing, our turn of management has really been changed because of this rule and this management of this museum, this is, you know, ancient history, right? And so when we're talking about, one, this particular monument, and two, our history telling and our storytelling as a city collectively, being able to have community-wide conversations that recognize that we are leaving people out when we say this way and not this way, and that we can actually tell a story that is inclusive, that recognizes, that yes, it's just one person, and no, he's not seen candidly responsible for the good side of many hundreds of thousands of people. However, like every, every history, right, we go down what we go down for, and this is the face of that. So we can recognize both things. We can recognize that for hundreds of years, this country, well, two hundred, right, this country has recognized a particular origin story. We can also recognize that that burdened story has caused damage and pain to many members of our community. And so that's what I love about the other ordinance that, that gives it basically creates space for this conversation, it creates an advisory committee, who's going to host this conversation? And so I just want to say thank you to you for including that piece in your resolution.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. So I, I also think of Councilwoman Taylor, and I think you all have raised awareness. And everyone was right, who said that it's important for us to understand history, but there's also two sides to every history. So yes, you are correct that we spoke of this thing on the island, but it was not called the Dominican Republic, it was called La Cenuela. And in eighteen oh four, the slaves revolted, where they became the first nation, the first black republic, the first nation in Western Hemisphere, in Western Hemisphere, to completely abolish slavery. When Christopher Columbus landed in La Cenuela, there were indigenous populations of the Tahitians. And IT is called Tahit because it was called the Anta announcement. And the Tahitians were completely wiped out of all of these forces. And then when we think about Christopher Columbus's journey here to America, and we think about our indigenous population, who were also colonized, they have to remember the history and the people that suffered, who lost their lives, who were enslaved, who were lynched. So there is, there is this story of exploration and discovery, but there also is a story of brutality, and we cannot forget that. So yes, I do think it's important to recognize this monument because we should never forget the history, but it's also important to have something to recognize the people that were there before Christopher Columbus. Because this was not the Spanish land, this was not the Italian land, this was not the European land. This land was the land of indigenous people from various nations, with indigenous communities. So we must celebrate, celebrate the blood that was shed. So there are two sides to history that we cannot forget. So I applaud you for thinking about bringing together a committee to look at this monument and to think about how we can ensure that we remember that our flags or anything that's in place to remember the history of the people. But the history of the people is, there's always two sides. There's a side where there's celebration, but there's also a side where there's brutality and hate. But it's, it's important for us to teach our community that, so that we can learn how to heal, we can learn how to work together, we can learn how to live with community, because the community that existed in the eighteen hundreds is not the community that exists now. I remember from two thousand and seven, I remember as a kid walking by that, by that statue, with my dad. And that is not the community as described here. It is a community of people from Dominican Republic, from Haiti, from Africa, from Italy, from Cape Verde, from all over the world. And it's important that we celebrate the culture that is within the race of all communities, who we cannot forget all of this. And in terms of Brown University, who's delivered, one of the things that she did before that she left was to ensure that we remember the history of the enslaved time and the role that Brown University played in that. And that's why the slavery and justice report was produced. And we're seeing more institutions like, in Washington DC, what is it, not just Washington, what is it, the, the, I can't remember right now, what is it?
Georgetown?
Georgetown, yes, Georgetown gave off a very strong force. But we're seeing more, because most of the universities were built on the backs of, this country was built on the backs of these enslaved times. So again, we cannot forget the history. We have to celebrate, but we also have to remember those who celebrate as well. So thank you.
Councilman Taylor.
So just quickly, just to highlight the council numbers, since the spot of that man will be placed soon, the benches are ready, there will be a camera there for next year. As far as the history box, I'm sticking with the history of why it should be in that area and remain in that area because the Gormons actually, interesting enough, the first silver set bought by the president was maritime in England. And as we all know, it was, that did weigh this year. So I'm not trying to say Columbus is perfect, and I'm not saying that. And American history is good and bad one hundred and twenty-six years from now, because people are going to look at us and say the world, they're going to be upset with what was said here, or what was said at another time, or what we're doing in the future. So American history is important. I think, like I said, we stand for this and it will be, cameras have it. Thank you everybody for your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion has been made on second to refer to the item twenty-nine, the community of City Property. All those in favor, aye, aye, aye.
Reports from committees, committee on the reports.
Madam President.
Please refer.
Motion to waive the reading of items twenty-three, twenty-two, and pass on a voice vote, second.
Motion has been made on second to waive the reading of items twenty-three, twenty-two, and these items are going to be passed on a voice vote. All those in favor, aye, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Item twenty-three, the resolution.
Madam President.
Please refer.
Motion to amend item twenty-three on the text, on, there's a reference to Dane Street, D-A-N-E, and it should be Dante, D-A-N-T-E, as well as Piers Street, which is a lovely name for a street, C-A-R-E-S, but it's actually Seer, C-E-R-E-S. So I'd like to make a motion to change the spelling of those two street names in this headline. Second motion.
On the amendment, okay, the motion has been made on second, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item twenty-three as amended and pass on a voice vote, second.
The motion has been made to pass item number twenty-three as amended. All those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Council, committee on finance, Councilman John J. Iglesias, Chairman.
Madam President.
Please refer.
Motion to waive the reading of items twenty-four through twenty-six and pass for the first time on a roll call vote, second.
The motion has been made on second to waive the reading of items twenty-four through twenty-six, and these items are going to be passed on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Ratos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo. Absent. Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Curber. Absent. Councilwoman Rorter. Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Noguchi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sellew. Absent. Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Gervin. You have eleven ayes and three absent, and madam, several have passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Petition from the clerk's desk, item twenty-seven, petition from Joseph P. Brennan Esquire.
Please refer.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item twenty-seven and refer to the committee ordinance. Second.
The motion has been made on second to waive the reading of item twenty-nine, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Item twenty-eight, petitions for compensation for injuries and damages.
Motion.
Referring to the committee on the point of issue.
Committee officials and reports, item twenty-nine, support from Council.
Please refer. Motion to waive the reading of item twenty-nine, thirty, received, second.
Motion has been made on second to waive the reading of item twenty-nine, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Item thirty-one.
Madam President.
Motion.
Motion to waive the reading of item thirty-one and refer to the point of finance, second.
Motion has been made on second to waive the reading of item thirty, received, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Item thirty-two, committee officials.
Madam President.
Please refer.
Motion to waive the reading of items thirty-two through thirty-five, received, second.
The motion has been made on second to waive the reading of item twenty-two through thirty-five, and these items are going to be received, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Presentation of resolutions and congratulations. Item thirty-six, Council President Montes and members of the city council, resolution extending the trust relations.
Please refer.
Madam President, motion to pass item thirty-six on a voice vote, second.
Motion has been made on second to pass item number thirty-six on a voice vote, all those in favor, aye, aye. Post, aye, aye.
Madam President.
Chair Ray Nelson.
I just want to talk about, I want to let me, to be real quick. I want to mention, a couple of things I just want to talk about lately, the latest step that, the riot, they were the, taking over the private school system. I am, I am very concerned. I'm concerned with the fact that they don't have put forth the true, proposed, turnover plan yet. That I'm concerned that I've unfortunately seen this movie before. This is many years they've been making, where I've seen another superintendent or another overseer coming to the city of poverty. And I'm concerned that there's not enough oversight for checks and balances. I'm concerned that I'm hearing all the politically correct things to say, but not the real things to say to help our children learn, provide a better location, a better education system for them. I'm concerned that in a couple of years... I'm concerned that in a couple of years, we're all gonna hear that they've increased the proficiency score by a hundred percent, and we're all gonna say, "Wow, that's unbelievable." But of course, when your proficiency scores are one point eight percent out of a hundred, or two percent out of a hundred in our high schools, and you increase it by a hundred percent, it sounds great. My concern is that, one of the issues is, and I know this is, that they talk about, one of these took about cell phones, as I heard recently, how, um, this marine said, "The parents and students are in charge of the school system." While I have no problem with the parents involved, I do have concern when the students are involved, their sense of this. The students are the ones that chose the new cell phone policy, which is, "We use it all the time, anytime we want, and do it when we want." Unfortunately, I'm a single parent, I raised two sons on my own. I know how difficult it is to raise kids. You need to give them some guidance, you need to give some pointers. But if the answer to our school system, which is one of the worst in the nation, is to hand the keys over to the actual students, who are in first grade, and second grade, fifth grade, and twelfth grade, folks, we're doing it a disservice. That sounds like political, I don't wanna put it, patronizer. What she's saying is, "We're gonna look at the school system, we're gonna identify what these children need, we're gonna provide a safe environment, we're gonna put a curriculum together, and we're gonna turn it around." And I'm gonna ask for the first mission, looking at the teacher's contract. It needs to become a professional performance-based contract. It needs to be about teaching our children, not about building widgets of cause. The teacher's contract right now is what they call an industrial-based contract. It's based on time, minutes, and seconds, how much a teacher will spend in a classroom. It's not based on performance and helping our children learn and be educated. I'm concerned that I'm not hearing. Now, I know, by the way, this is not appropriate time, because right now, it's completely correct to raise a red flag and concern, because we all wanna just let it, just put it behind us and say, "They can take care of it." Folks, we cannot allow that to happen. Okay? We cannot allow to think that our overall overseers have the unilateral oversight, and they think, and they don't know the same thing, they don't know our neighborhoods, they don't know our kids, but yet, they're going to dictate how to educate our children. I'm concerned that sometimes, when you give the keys over to individual or individuals, which is an easy way out for the city, that potentially, what we end up getting is the same result that we've been getting. We need to get serious about our school education. I want to succeed, I want the children to succeed. But the bottom line is, as you know, there are certain schools in city projects that do succeed, certain child schools do succeed. And yet, we're not looking to them to figure out how they can turn it around, when we think we need to have someone who doesn't know us, doesn't know our children, but they're gonna tell us how to turn it around. I love when they help and they guidance, but I think it's important, by the way, that we just don't completely advocate our responsibility to our children and our neighborhood. Because what's next? Are they simply just gonna dictate policy and send us a bill? Is that the answer? Now, maybe you may feel fine with that. I'm not. Because they are saying nothing at this point in time to show us what they're specifically going to do to turn or make the school system better. In fact, they're actually utilizing the things that we always set in place, which is funding and bonding to rehab our schools. They're taking credit for that. Trying to make our, uh, uh, schools safer, and take... So what's gonna happen is they're just taking the elements that were positive, that we were doing, and saying, "Take credit for them." And then, not addressing what they need to be addressed. So I'm concerned, I don't think, I think we have to be vigilant, I don't think we should just concede. And my concern also is the fact that, right as officially stated, in basically all intents and purposes, guess what, folks? You as duly elected officials are irrelevant. You are irrelevant. You're just gonna send us a bill, and hopefully, they provide the service that you think that they want. So, let's, uh, I think we need to rethink this, and be vigilant, and question, and put forward metrics, and force them to perform, before they just simply send us a bill and give us the same product that we have already. So, I ask all my council colleagues to continue to be vigilant. Don't be irrelevant, stand up for your neighborhood, protect our children.
Councilwoman Rortus? Councilwoman Iglesias, we've been failing our students for over twenty years now. The teacher's contract was a disappointment for many years. This is an opportunity for us to change it, but our students have not been doing well. I'm also a single parent of two kids in our public schools, I'm a product of other schools, but I also consider myself a part of a group of privileged poor, a person who probably had certain resources and advantages that many of my peers did not have. We need to take a bold stand, we need some sort of reform. I do agree that there needs to be more collaboration in the city and the people who are here, but I do also know that we could fail our students, that we could all move forward the way that we have. Our median possible income is about three thousand dollars a year, and that might be soon. When you look at, um, John Freeman created, uh, an atlas to show the outcome of our students. When you come from neighborhoods like O297, O295, and you're a black woman or, or someone of color, you're at a disadvantage. Education correlates with health, it correlates with housing. If we're not providing our kids enough adequate, well, with an exceptional education, that they will not succeed. We have been failing our kids. We have. We have. We can't pretend that we have not. The numbers are not lying. Yes, RIDE should have done better. They should have held, if they provided interventions, they should have held our district, they should have held the schools accountable. There's certain things that they should have done, but we cannot pretend that we have not failed our students as well. So I want to see our students, our children, do better. I want more of our kids going to school, and going to college, and staying in college. I worked in higher education, I've worked in higher education for close to fourteen years now. In Philadelphia, in Manhattan, and students from our urban communities, they're the ones who do the worst. They're the ones who come in for academic spending, they're the ones who are put on probation, they're the ones who are suspended. We need to do better. We need teachers that reflect our student body. We need to provide more opportunities for EL learners, and EL learners that have students who speak Spanish, students who speak French, Portuguese, students who speak Portuguese, students who speak, um, various sub-Asian languages. Students who speak indigenous languages that they don't even have the right. We have to do better. We need to change the funding formula to ensure that our students who are receiving, or communities that are receiving free, free lunch, are not receiving the same as reduced lunch. Our students have greater needs than others. We need to do better by our students. Because if we don't, then guess what? It's a disadvantage for our city. Who's gonna hire homes, our homes, when some of us retire? Who's willing to take jobs? Who's, who's gonna be the next, who's gonna take your seat? At some point. We need our kids to be properly educated, so that they are prepared for the workforce and for college. So we can't pretend that we, we've been doing it well because we haven't done it. So I hope that we all cooperate with RIDE. And I agree with you, I wanna see the plan. I wanna see the plan in stages, I wanna understand the, the measures, and I do think there should be more of a partnership, which I have not. And we don't have any example that shows that this is something, that this is, that's political work in the future, because we won't know until ten years from now. But whatever decisions that's made today, we need to have foresight and think about the long-term impact. But we need to stop blaming everyone, because we all, every single one of us, have failed our kids. And if we continue to be silent, our kids will not go anywhere. I am the only one, my parents have five children. I am the only one in advanced, in looking at advanced degree. One of my brothers went to law school, and we dropped out of the U.R.I., studying a chemical engineer. For many families, it's a matter of life or death. Because when I was running government, I had nights to wake up to blood stains on our doorstep, or someone got stabbed, or shot. We need to perform our schools. And the studies show it takes community effort, but let's stop pretending that we've been doing right by our kids, because we're lying to ourselves. We need to move forward in a positive way, we need to hold the commissioner, any of the other government, because before the commissioner came here, it was the governor who came up to this point. So you know what? If they're not cooperating with us, and this initiative fails, I'm going to clean that up. But let's not pretend that we didn't do right by our kids as well. Thank you.
Chair Ryan?
Madam President? Actually, I think it's wonderful that council, councilman you support my position, because that's exactly what I was talking about. As you know, by the way, when you talk about the teacher's contract, I voted against a teacher's contract. I specifically voted against it, because it wasn't professional performance measures clear. I took a statement at school, it was playing pretty low. Everybody just wanted to go along together. But I think there were a couple of things. It's not about saying that people have failed, we know that, but we also need to emphasize the successes. I'm gonna be fortunate, by the way, because I'm only the second person in my family that received a higher education. I'm not gonna go into my history of my family, when my, my aunt was torn out of school, and they said, "You couldn't teach your kind." Or people roughed up because of the nationality of my family, because we all have experienced those types of things in some form or fashion. But I don't say that's, I know, I know, we don't, at least in my neck of the woods. I have the number one performing charter school in Raleigh. One of the best performing schools in the city province. And I fought for that school specifically, to make sure that children in my neighborhood had the best education possible. And by the way, you know what the vote was on the floor? It was eight seven. I built two major schools in my neighborhood, way back, my, the children of my neighborhood. Do you know what the vote on the floor was? Eight seven. Both times we have been working hard, week in and week out, to get eight votes, to move the town, to build a new school, to provide a cool environment, and a good education. I know what it takes to get a success, but I'm asking all of you to, is to join together, together. So when I was talking, and I said, "I voted against a teacher's contract," because it was, it was a bad contract, and it didn't have professional performance-based measures, I was hoping you would join. That was an opportunity to take a stand. My point today is that we need to continue to take a stand together. So I'm not gonna cast this question on anybody's background or relationship, what he did and did not do the past year, two years, three years, five years, ten years. I'm gonna move forward and ask all of you to join together, to be vigilant, to protect our children together, not dwell on if someone made a faux pas, or didn't pass a break, or failed a particular area. But how do we get together as a company, and make sure that everybody is held accountable, so we can provide a good education for all our children, no matter what the color of their skin is, no matter what sex or sexuality they are, no matter what country they come from, no matter if they are here, or if they're not. But to protect our children, and all of us, we drive from our neighborhood to the city, see on a daily basis, getting up, going to school, sometimes in the coat, as we showed this morning, trying to get a decent education. So if you'll say, and cast a question on whoever you want, including myself, I will take that either. Because I'm being a friend of the children of Providence, I'm asking all of you to stand with me, not badder down, or complain, or say someone's not doing the right thing. I'm asking, "Let's move forward." Either we move forward together, or we all lose together. So that's all I'm asking. And I'm asking that we make sure we both are held accountable, we make sure our children are funded, and taxpayers of Providence are spending for the school system is spent wisely and productively, so all our children are getting an education. That's all I'm asking.
Chairman? Thank you. Um, I, I'm gonna speak, so council, uh, the time is on the table.
Uh, first, before we each start, I've been notified that councilman Iglesias has put out a record that she wishes to be deflected as having a review decision on item number twenty-six. Uh, Mr. President, you've noticed that?
So did I.
I appreciate that, I miss her, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Council President Montes?
Thank you, Councilwoman Correa. I decided to speak because I could hear the same thing. Everyone wants to do something about the takeover. Everyone has an opinion about what's happening with the school now. I just wanted to leave a record, that I communicated with everyone in the city council, and I asked everyone if they wanted to have a meeting, if they wanted to say something. We had an opportunity, we had an opportunity to say, "No, we don't want to do this." And I just want to remind everyone to go and check your emails. On August fifteen, you got an email that said, "Last week, we learned about the release of the pre-constitution order, that when the proudly act, explain the reasons why, and authorizes the state to take control over the budget, program, personnel of our school." I have a special order in this email, in case you have, you have yet to read it. I write this email in case any of you have any questions, concerns, you want to be with me in person about this. If you do, please, don't hesitate to reach out. And I have to say this, because I had heard comments that I sent a letter back to the commissioner that was a violation of the media office. Everyone had an opportunity to say something. And we didn't, because I'm doing this all, we did not, okay? So now, the best thing that we can do is try to be supportive of our community, our residents, and try to make this a program that is gonna work the best way possible. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Martin? Presentation of resolutions and boardroom. Item thirty-seven, council president Montes, members of the city council, resolution extending sent at table.
Mr. President? Motion to, uh, pass item ninety-one, and that was rising vote, item thirty-seven, second.
He's gonna motion into the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. President? Motion to adjourn in the memory of Providence Police Sergeant Ed Malloy Jr., who passed last Thursday after a violent five-year battle with cancer, until our next, um, regularly scheduled council meeting, November twenty-first. Thank that motion.
Or is it being adjourned, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just adjourn.